All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, May 27th, 6:00 PM. City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting and order it. And all of us at the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me as standing for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day and thank you for the opportunity we have to serve this great community. Just pray that you'll be with us tonight and guide conversations and discussions and decisions we make on behalf of this community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, you want to do roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Gerson?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a question?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Sandra Heinz.
Can I get them this?
Sure. Sure.
Hi. Can you hear me? Oh, yeah. My name is Sandra Heinz, 624 Carolina Boulevard. I would like to present Plant of Palm 2.0. It is a grassroots, community-driven initiative aimed at planting palm trees in the Front Beach Commercial District parking lot. This project is designed to enhance the natural beauty of the area while fostering stronger sense of civic pride among all property owners and businesses. We respectfully request the city's approval to initiate the Plant of Palm 2.0 project. We are looking at a fall installation after the summer rush. We realize that Donnie's Department may have some concerns and look forward to discussions in committee. We will have a more formal presentation at that time. Upon receiving approval, we will launch the Contribution Program Support through Property Owners, Businesses, and Friends of the Island. Each may sponsor a palm tree for $300. Benefits to this would be beautification of a dirt lot, no reduced parking spaces, shade for those parking spaces. Tourists will benefit from the shade and beautification just as they benefit from the beach sweeps. Also, with rising sea levels, trees take up a lot of groundwater. Basically, what we would need from the city is approval to proceed, irrigation, and maintenance. The initiative has been very well received with a commitment of 132 trees in the first week and a half. This is just under 40,000 initial commitments, so people are really excited about this, and it is a great community unifier. Thank you. Oh, I was thinking, too, there's some people here that are supporting the initiative. Will y'all stand up? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Vega?
My name is Sarah Vega, and I am a full-time resident at 104 Sparrow Drive. Tonight, I'm here because I believe it's important to publicly say thank you to Chief Kevin Cornet and the men and women of IOPPD for the role that they play in keeping our children safe. If y'all haven't heard of Operation Safe Stop, let me tell you a little bit about it. It's really not unusual for us to see a patrol car trailing our daughter's bus as it pulls up to drop her off in the afternoon. And it's not the bus driver that they're watching, it's the rest of us. Our officers are keeping an eye on whether you and I remember that it's important to stop on a two-lane road when a school bus has red lights flashing. When the police department shared Operation Safe Stop via social media in January, they had already cited six drivers for not stopping, and I agree with them. That's way too many. I'm sincerely hoping, Chief, that it's been zero since then. As school ends for CCSD on Thursday, I wanted to make sure that we thank these officers for what they've done during the school year, and also call upon us as a community to make sure that we slow down, take a little extra time, and pay attention so that everyone can have a safe and fun summer. Thank you.
Susan Smith?
Hello, Susan Hill-Smith, 2023rd Avenue. And I just had a few things I wanted to talk on. One was the Plant of Palm 2.0, which I was so excited to see bubble up. I was traveling, and I can't believe how quickly that has come together, and just excited about the enthusiasm that I'm seeing for adding palmettos back into our landscape when we are losing quite a few. I would encourage that you involve the Environmental Advisory Committee in the planning and review of those plans, as well as arborists, including Matt Sims from the Building Department, who is a certified arborist, to make sure that you're getting the best outcomes with that plan and coordination with that community group. And possibly look at adding in some live oaks and other native trees. If not in the parking lot, then it sounds like there's enough momentum to maybe spread the love to other areas, perhaps Carmen Bunch Park and other areas where you have space available for adding trees. Hopefully, this is just the beginning of making the island a lot greener. I also want to thank you for including a staff position in the budget for resiliency, as recommended by both the Beach Preservation Committee and the Community Enrichment Task Force. I would encourage that you make sure that you are flexible in the salary that you're setting for that, making sure that you're getting somebody who has a technical expertise to handle some of those difficult or challenging projects. And finally, I would like to thank you for reinstating the hourly parking after 4:00 PM and the city parking lots at Front Beach, and including an annual pass option for Low Country residents. I think that's really important, both for our businesses, for our relationships with other communities in the Low Country, and also for getting people steering that direction instead of into our neighborhoods. So, thank you very much.
Zachary Larry?
Hello, Zachary Larry, 1 Morgan Place Drive, also here on behalf of the IOP Chamber of Commerce. Here today to, I guess, rescind or withdraw our initial request on the ATACs funding, the $15,000 that was ultimately, you know, made forth as a recommendation. I feel as though we wouldn't be able to effectively deploy it in the way that our ultimate strategy for targeted brand awareness of the island would entail. You know, you guys are obviously aware, you know, $15,000, I think, is what we had for our proof of concept approved with zero data or anything to support it. You know, we took that $15,000, used it for a very specific pilot campaign in the last two months of last year, came back with some pretty extraordinary data as far as, you know, I think it was 1.2 million impressions. We ended up getting ultimately 4,000 hot leads in the sense of, you know, we got visitor information as far as, you know, where they live, names, you know, things of that nature, you know, the actual specifics that we can use for future campaigns. And again, in order for us to be effective, you know, we have, you know, some strategies as far as when we deploy it throughout the year, being able to, you know, not target on one specific time, be able to assess real-time data, talk with our local island businesses, you know, get that immediate feedback loop, and, you know, talk with you guys as far as what the brand for the island needs to be and be able to effectively, you know, market that. Our pilot campaign was heavily centered upon being a family-friendly destination. You know, the chambers very well camp that family-friendly is good for family, for island businesses, as far as, you know, families are visiting, they're eating at island restaurants, they're using our facilities, you know, not going over the bridge, et cetera. So, you know, again, that was our objective, and the $15,000, we just need to reassess and figure out a better way to, you know, help support the island businesses, you know, with this campaign. So, thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
That's all.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next item is approval of previous meetings minutes. You have the City Council meeting on April 22nd, 2025, Special City Council Workshop on May 13th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any edits or changes?
Mr. Pierce offered two small spelling errors that I missed in the April 22nd minutes, and those have been amended.
Okay. Any others? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You also have citizens' comments and other committee meetings attached in the packet. No old business tonight, new business. Most of this we've discussed in detail at a workshop earlier this month, so we may run through most of these fairly quickly. Consideration of tied value purchase, $67,845, plus $11,800 installation with Trulock, and it's in the budget. You can see where that's coming from. Douglas, any update or anything to add there?
No, just that this is serving the Second Avenue Basin, which is high on the hit list of the Public Works Department. We feel like this will be a very impactful project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, consideration of purchase of Office 365 Migration, $34,019, one time, and $2,600 roughly recurring monthly. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Questions, comments? Douglas, anything to add there?
Yeah, the only thing I would add here is there is a $2,600 recurring monthly fee that is actually replacing another recurring fee, and it's slightly less than that. So even though it's on there as an additional expense, it's actually taking the place of a more expensive recurring fee. So there's a savings there. I would also add that Councilman Pierce has kind of taken an interest in this. We've been looking pretty diligently about the archiving and backing up and being sure that we don't lose any of the old data in this transition. So we're continuing to do that, get that correct, and this is also a key component for the police department. It was a little bit on the back burner, but it's become a pretty urgent need for them, so we're pushing it along with some urgency at this point.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, mutual aid agreement with North Charleston Police Department. Chief, I'm assuming this is just like we've done the rest. Or Douglas, see the one, sorry.
Yeah, this is the, I think we're, it's just replacing an existing agreement, same thing that we've had in the past, just re-upping that same agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is approval of ATAC sponsorship. This is coming from the ATAC Advisory Committee as far as their recommendations. YWCA Martin Luther King Jr. Event, $5,000. We just heard the chamber wants to rescind theirs and kind of retool and think about how to better serve that. And then the Mary Alice Monroe Authors Event for $35,000.
So just to be clear, it's zero for the chamber?
Yes.
Clear.
Are we voting on all three of them?
Good thing, which I would, I would take them all at a time.
It's fine. So first from YWCA Martin Luther King Jr. Event for $5,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, the initial request was $10,000 from the YWCA Martin Luther King Event, and reduced to $5,000 recommendation by ATAC. So this is one of those cultural events that I think that we should be involved in on the Isle of Palms. I would recommend that we revisit that and propose that we up that to the original $10,000 request, or at least consider it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Do we know why the?
Jan, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Do we know why they made the change from 10 to 5? Was there any?
You know, I would just give my personal impression of the discussions at the ATAC Committee was that the event has still not generated a significant number of visitors to the island. I think this would be their third, their third year for having the event, and it's still very, very low attendance in terms of people coming and staying on the island that can be documented. So, you know, there is a provision in there to support cultural events, but generally, their focus at the ATAC Committee has been heads and beds, and it's failed to kind of, you know, jumpstart or appear to have generated a lot of visitors.
So is it well-attended and just not getting people staying overnight? Is that?
I think well-attended is, I do think it probably is, you know, I can't say it's well-attended, but by and large, the folks that are attending aren't staying on the island overnight.
I think it was like 150 to 200 people last year, Katie, attending the event.
Is this something that perhaps, instead of us just overrunning the ATAC Committee and their conclusion and recommendation, could we approve the five, perhaps, and maybe send back to, if we've got some time, maybe what we could do is send it back to them and ask them to either reconsider or, you know, give us a little bit more backing of why they're going five versus the 10. It sounds like they've got some, but I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable overriding the ATAC Committee's recommendation. I think they put a lot of thought into their recommendations, and they're trying to allocate the small bucket of money that we have equitably across multiple applicants, and I think we ought to honor their recommendation.
Yeah. Scott, I would not disagree. I have a hard time when we are asking volunteers to spend their time to do the reviews and look at it, where they cause, I mean, all of this is, but I think I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Statement. Jan's got her hand up. I'm sorry. Jan, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that the YWCA is actively working to increase the number of heads and beds on the island for this event. It is a brand-new event. Mary Alice Monroe took 20 years to get where she is now. It's a new event that I think gives us a great reputation to have it here, so I just ask you to consider that when you're, when you're voting.
Can we, is the option of voting for the five and sending it back, is, do we need to make an amendment for that, or is that?
I think you would vote down the 10 if you weren't in favor of that, and then approve the five and just have a follow-up to the committee.
But there, and there is still time for that? Is that?
Yeah. Because this is a January event. It's very, yeah.
There's dust.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So the amendment is to increase the amount from five.
Second, if I needed to.
It's already on the table. Yeah. So all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nicole?
Motion fails. So you're back to your original $5,000.
Yep. And Douglas, I think if you can just have a takeaway to take that back to the ATAC Committee.
Yeah, and I would just say the ATAC Committee, in their, in their discussions, expressed a desire to kind of talk through with them ways of increasing the heads and beds. Think that, I think your motion is fitting with what their goal was as well.
And Nicole, just point of order, given the chamber has rescinded, do we need to address that?
Do we need to vote on the five?
Yes. You need to vote on the five. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is the motion second for the five?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, Nicole.
If they rescinded it?
Well, maybe you need to vote it all and skip that.
Can I just make a comment on this? I had a lot of interest in this whole initiative from the very beginning, because I do think it's critical that we rebrand the island, family-first island, and we get that out very strong in our marketing material. And I think that the pilot was a good program, and I'm all in favor of supporting the chamber with more money around this initiative. I just think it's in the wrong bucket. I think this is advertising that should come out of our 30% ATAC money and not out of the 60%. And so I'd be supportive for you to go rework it. If we can figure a way for you to get with the CVB and find a way for you to carve off a piece of that money in order to go out and really hit hard this branding effort that you've started, I would be all supportive of that.
And also, what's, what would be entailed in having you recognize as an alternate DMO? I mean, I think that's something, when you're taking it back internally, look at what it would take to have you officially be the, an A DMO option for us. We are spending approximately $1.1 million on advertising. That money comes in and is going right out, and I'm going to say mindset, I think it would be great to have a local DMO where we could actually send more money to you. But it would have, I think it's in that one bucket. We've got more than enough money to, that we're spending on advertising. It's grown from a few hundred thousand dollars years ago to over a million, nearly a million one. I think there's enough to go around for more than one effort, and I think it would be great to have a local presence that's, you know, working on our behalf.
Mayor? Yep. It could get, it could get you further beyond the 55. Rusty?
Yeah, thank you. Little couple things here. I'm, I was in favor of this also initially with the $55,000 ask. I felt the presentation was very well-done, very professional, and it targeted a gap of time on our island that, that we don't have a lot of visitors. And I think the presentation that Zach and Brian Hoffman and some of them made, that we all saw, and then really kind of hit some of the, some of the key points that would be needed to really keep Isle of Palms in a focus of a family-friendly beach and also attract some visitors, again, in the shoulder season, that wouldn't necessarily mean a lot more people, but maybe a higher, higher-value customer. They're spending more. So I really thought that it had some real potential here had it been funded. Unfortunately, it wasn't. You know, a common misconception is that we give money to each CVB. We don't give them a dollar. The state takes that money. That money never goes through our coffers at all. So when someone says, well, we give CVB 1.1, 1.3 million dollars, that's not right. That's not the way it works. So I think that there could be a good opportunity here for partnership with the chamber and with CVB. CVB is our designated DMO because they're, they are professional in what they do, and they have the track record to do it. The chamber is still a fledgling organization on the island, doesn't have the track record to be a DMO yet, but there is a good possibility that with the assistance of someone willingly, like the CVB, that a portion of that 30% someday could go to the chamber directly rather than going to the CVB, and then the CVB turning around and, you know, and carving a portion of it out of their funds to work with it. So I just want to clear that up. But again, I was in favor of it. I think it would have been a good project to undertake, and I'm sorry that it had to get pulled, but I understand completely, and I wish you good luck on, in the future in trying to bring this to fruition.
Next item is Mary Alice Monroe Author Event for 35,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question?
Jimmy?
I looked at the paperwork, the presentation, a lot of data, very good presentation. A notice towards the 501(c)(3), the Island School Literacy Events is the 501(c)(3) that is asking for the funds. Who was, who will the check be made out to? Will it be made out to the Mary Alice Monroe Event or to this nonprofit?
I would expect it would be that nonprofit. That is the, that's the applicant and the organization that's filed the application.
You know, they, um, they registered with South Carolina Secretary of State, and they got their determination letter from the IRS last December '23, but I looked up for tax return to 990, which is public information, is open to anybody, and they hadn't filed anything for '23 or '24 at this point. I guess we might want to ask for that in the future.
Certainly check on where we've made those checks payable to in the past.
Yeah, I'd had no problem with the budget or whatever. Everything was laid out nicely. I was just curious about the 501(c)(3). Anytime a 501(c)(3) comes before us, I think it's our duty to do a little work on it, make sure that we know who the money's going to. But you feel certain it's going to the Island School Literacy Events?
And that is who I would assume it's going to.
Yeah, and they would happen.
And I would plan that we would make the check out to them this time. I just don't know who it was made out to last time.
Jimmy, are you asking maybe we should do some, just follow-up due diligences?
Um, no, I just wanted to just make sure it's a 501(c)(3). It's not like a private company or Schedule C or anything. The 501(c)(3)'s are tax returns. It's public record. Anybody can look it up on the IRS website, and also check it out on the South Carolina Secretary of State. But I always look at, see if they're in compliance with tax return filings, and they're probably on extension for '24. If they were, their year-end is November 30th, so their year-end would have been, I mean, the due date would have been April 15th. But if they filed a 8868 extension form, that gives them another six months. It's just, I would just request that the funds be made out to the 501(c)(3).
I think, Scott, to your question, just like the other item, I think if we want to approve this tonight, we can have it as an ATAC follow-up question. Douglas, just to make sure how the money's going to flow or how it's flowed in the past.
Right.
Other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, consideration of LENS request for signage at the island entrance at our workshop earlier this month. A lot of discussion, and we had asked staff to take it back to LENS to look at. I think it was, Jimmy, your recommendation, look at other alternative locations that we could put signage, assuming it was going to be LENS and maybe others. Douglas, I think you've had a conversation with LENS. They're open to that, so I really think this should go back to a committee for further conversation, but I'll let you.
That's correct. Yeah, I've just verified that they, they would be open to other locations that, and I think it would be proper to send it back to the committee.
Yeah, I agree. Actually, I thought that's what we decided at the workshop, but apparently, if you look at the minutes, it could be something different, so I do support that, that should go back to committee and develop a policy on it.
Do we, we don't need to vote on that?
No. Thank you. All right. Next item, Boards and Commissions Report. We have the Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes are attached. Planning Commission Minutes are attached. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee Minutes are attached, and the Environmental Advisory Committee Minutes are attached. Next item is ordinances, resolutions, and petitions. We have a couple for second reading. First one is ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance to adopt a budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, for residents that did not attend the earlier public hearing they had, we had a minute ago. The budget is part of this package. There's a one-page summary. If you don't like the detail, on page 112, that gives you all the revenue and expenses for the city. And just high level, there's no tax increase for the year, numerous projects slated for completion or at least starting. We're paying off the debt for Fire Station Number Two, and our cash reserves are increasing, so that kind of gives you the headline, if you will. So we have a motion, and a second, we'll get to discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Other items for question or comments or, excuse me? Sorry, Scott.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Thank you, Doug, Douglas, and staff for your work on the budget. In recent years, the Isle of Palms has benefited from a post-COVID surge in tourism-driven revenues fueled by the rise in short-term rental units, increasing rental rates, inflation-related interest income, and a local building and hospitality boom. Like many governments that receive windfalls, the city has been increasing operating expense growth rates at a pace exceeding projected revenue growth. IOP reported over $51 million in cash accounts, and our auditors have committed to the city's operating expense coverage, all positive, but it's one side of the ledger and based on a snapshot in time. Most of the cash is already committed to projects or restricted, with over $20 million for the FY '27 Beach Nurishment Project. Some recent trends in this year's budget. Payroll and benefit-related expenses have grown 48% in just four years, from 8.3 million and 55% of the general fund revenue to 12.1 million and 74% this year. In another four years, these costs consume 84% of the general fund revenue. This trajectory is unsustainable. While we acknowledge the need to better align revenue and operating cost growth, like when we added the unbudgeted paramedic team a couple of years ago, actions have lagged. This year's revenue budget does include two overdue market-based increases in parking rates and business license fees, plus $4.8 million in one-time grants. IOP's share of the next major beach nourishment project is estimated at over $20 million of the nearly $30 million total project cost. Costs are twice the 2018 nourishment project, and IOP's contribution has increased tenfold from prior contributions. Historically, IOP paid 16% of the cost, with state, FEMA, and private entities covering the rest. This time, nearly all the costs will fall to us. The state allocated only $1.5 million in the current budget for our, all South Carolina beach nourishment. To fund this project, IOP will deplete $10 million of the beach, of the Beach Free Nourishment Fund and require the remaining millions of dollars from the ATACs, hospitality, and other funds. We'll get through the upcoming project, but unlike other municipalities, we have not acted upon securing sustainable funding sources for the next more costly eight-year nourishment cycle. As a consequence, and as reflected in future year projections, there is limited investment[1798.23] As a consequence, and as reflected in future year projections, there is limited investment in infrastructure, beach management, and resilience projects. We also have structural deficiencies in the budgeting process. Despite last year's brief discussion to reconstitute the Ways and Means Committee and modernize budgeting tools, neither has occurred. Our staff still relies on decade-old spreadsheets with hardcoded values, manual entry, and no integrated planning tools. This is a clear risk. For example, 4.4 million in manual entry errors impacting fund balances, a mistake I found in a cursory review, should be a wake-up call. Several more errors were discovered during budget preparation. Staff shouldn't be making critical calculations without adequate planning tools. There's little to no integration between payroll models, the 10-year capital plan, or the budget files themselves, which creates opportunity for inconsistencies and increases the risk of compounding errors. Basic AI tools reviewing our files immediately flags pervasive logic errors and recommend restructuring. If we don't modernize, we are setting up both staff and future councils for failure. Some recommendations to consider. Reinstate the Ways and Means Committee to enhance financial oversight and planning. Provide staff with modernized, integrated budgeting and planning tools. And aggressively pursue sustainable revenue sources for long-term beach management and new resilience projects, as peer communities have done. While I'm confident IOP will make it through another funding year, IOP cannot support a budget that continues the trend of increasing financial risk and missed opportunities. Without action, future councils will inherit uncertainty and constrained options to address the long-term financial needs of the community.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Sorry. Jan, did you vote?
I moved, I.
Thank you. Next item for second reading, ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance to adopt business license fees. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Sorry.
You can figure that out.
John and Katie, put them where you want them. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Sorry, Jimmy. Nicole, are you good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Couple items for first reading title only. Ordinance 2025-05, an ordinance to amend the revocation trigger from a calendar year to a 365-day rolling period and to stipulate, excuse me, that two garbage can violations are equivalent to one founded complaint for revocation purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I'd like for us to consider, this looks like two different subject matters. Consider one at a time, please.
This is also first reading?
Yeah.
By total.
So, just first reading? Never mind, it's okay.
So, does it go back to committee and?
Yeah.
Safety committee, right? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was it just Councilmember Ward that said nay or somebody else?
Yes.
No, I said nay.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Nicole, was there a vote?
Yes, sir.
Seven, two.
Seven, two?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, ordinance 2025-06, prohibit pool seaward of the maximum building line.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Next item was Resolution 2025-02, create hourly afternoon parking rates and seasonal parking passes.
Motion to approve.
And Scott, wave reading?
Oh, and wave reading.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Would just point out that we have reversed the date periods from, it says Labor Day